Denial, and here's a, you know, and here's a setback, if you want to approve.
Table, because I don't know where else.
Let me just hand these out.
But she has, she gets the bus, and if the train is on time.
If the train.
I said.
Melissa, am I going to be able to share the screen?
Yes.
Now you can just look at it now that I'm. It would be different tonight.
Hey, Alex, who's away from town, it looks like she's sitting in the sun, can you hear us here? Not. You're the best, thank you.
I can hear you, hi.
You are. It's cold here.
I'm in Miami.
No, Sydney.
Sorry.
It's okay, we love it.
But I'm here to talk about community character.
Yay, she's loyal to the soil of Woodstock.
There's two people on screen, which one's the community character?
All of us.
Both of them, that's the right answer.
Whoever's playing happy sex.
It's like to choose what happens. I need to find our.
Go ahead and start.
Okay. I need to find our.
Okay, it is six o'clock, and I would like to call to order the workshop hybrid meeting of the Woodstock Planning Board for March 30th, 2023. Are there any updates to the agenda?
There are not.
We have the minutes from March 16th, if everybody agreed to accept them as is.
Some.
Alright, so. Okay, so. On the scheduled business, this workshop meeting, we decided on the topic of community character. With the growing development within our town and ever-changing community standards, this should give us some more tools. We need to evaluate upcoming and current applications. We had touched on community characters some time ago with John Lyons, and we can further look into it with the CECL and EAF workshops, workbooks, for more information after this. I would like to thank Mr. Dennis Doyle, Director of the Ulster County Planning Department, for always being available to us and being willing to come and teach us those valuable resources that we use for every application we see. So now I will turn it over to Dennis.
Thank you. If nobody minds, I'm going to stand, I know this sounds like electric, though. It helps my back, I'm getting to the age where my back bothers me, actually, I'm getting to the age where just about everything bothers me. But, did you manage to find that? Yeah, so, I didn't want to do a presentation, but I sort of, when I looked and saw that there were a number of people that were going to be here on soon, I thought it would be better if I had a few slides, and slides, there are only a few. So, I would like to do this on the basis of a conversation rather than a presentation. It's a lot better for me, and I really appreciate you giving me an easy topic like community character. And, and if I say anything that sounds like it's legal, it's not, I am not an attorney. And I'll repeat that if you, if anybody asks me in terms of an opinion. So, a couple of things from my perspective looking at this is, when we look at community character, there's an old saying is, is that I know it when I see it. It's like modern art, I guess, to a certain extent. But, when you look at the handbook and you look at the case law, what you're going to find is, is that there's, there's really not a lot of guidance out there, and in some instances, the guidance that DEC gives you seems to be contradictory. But if there's anything that I would tell you relative to community character is that the reviewing agency needs to understand what the existing community character is. If you can't articulate, or you don't have specific goals in mind, or you don't have specific language within your zoning statute, and I'll be talking something about design guidelines as well. It becomes very much subjective when you start to say, this is a problem, and remember that the secret question with respect is to, to community character basically starts with the negative. So it becomes really, really difficult to make decisions in terms of what constitutes a significant impact with respect to community character if you don't really understand what your existing community character is. So my question to you and to the group is, is there within your comprehensive plan? Is there within your policies with the board? Is there within your zoning statute, something that will give?
Can't hear anyone.
Well, our comp plan refers to it as an artist community and encouraging arts and art activities. I guess part of our character is art.
Anyone else? Okay, so, the Department of Vital Controlieration defines it essentially as natural and man-made features that constitutes community character. So, looking at your response with respect, it's about art, my question is, is there any natural and man-made features that you would say this constitutes our community character? This is, these are things that we're really, really concerned about.
Well, then, the comprehensive plan really indicates that it's the natural environment and the scenic vistas of our town that makes our environment.
And the small-town character.
Yeah, small-town.
Historical buildings.
There, while there certainly can be geographic characters associated with that, Main Street is different, for example, than Cooper Lake. Those are things that you could take into account when you start working it, so it's not a unified community character, but it is something that would be consistent with the land use around it, and that brings me to the second bullet here, and that's the type and intensity land use. So a lot of, a lot of times when you're having a discussion about community character, you end up having a discussion about the type and intensity lands. So, the example I would give you is multifamily versus single-family. The example, other example I would give you is lot coverage, thinking about lot coverage work, but relative to that on subdivisions or on even commercial buildings, how much green space is there? Is there anything in your zoning statute that talks about green space, talks about that lot cover?
What about people?
So, what I would tell you is, is that the, in my opinion, the guidance from DEC seems to be contradictory. In that it starts out by defining community character as natural man-made features. And then it goes on, if you read through it, it begins to start a discussion about things like community services, impact on community services, where you're basically changing the way or the number and times of where community, of the community services that are needed to pull these fire and ambulance. For me, and that's me, that does not, that's not a community character issue, but the guidance within DEC says that it is. So I'll just, I'll leave you with that. The case law doesn't, there's, there's some, the possibility of case law that I've been able to find doesn't suggest that that's, that is the case, that the, the case law seemed to suggest that community character was rooted more in the stats and intensity than it is in terms of impact on services.
Well, I'm asking a slightly different question. It isn't so much a question of services as what kinds of people are enabled to be in a place.
Wow. The.
Or tend to be in a place.
So, the, I think, you, I'm going to step outside the secret process for a certain extent, and I think if you're suggesting that there is a means to essentially control either the rates or, or the, or the affordability of things that you're going to run into some issues that are outside of the secret document, particularly with respect, with respect to the, the issues with respect to social justice and equity and diversity. And then the second piece of that is with respect to affordability as it comes to the fair housing question. And there are things, the example I would give you is there are preemptions in zoning statutes that occur. Those preemptions, I'll give you one preemption, in fact, there is mental health group homes, the state has preempted local zoning for mental health group homes. There's also preemptions for, for other types of things relative to, relative to zoning, one of those would be daycare facilities. So you run into, you run in, you have to step outside sometimes, see your document, and begin to start to think of what other zoning, what other statutes or, or laws are in place that you, that you can't run foul of. And the fair housing statute is one of the ones that I would be really concerned about, if we were basically having a discussion, well, we don't want affordable housing because there are different kind of people that would be associated with it, or we don't want the example, another example I would give you, mental health group homes, because of that, there have been preemptions with respect to that. Does that answer your question?
Well, it does, but it doesn't, I mean, one of the things that I think, one of the ways I have been wording the problem, is we're turning into a theme park. How do you preserve the, a diversity of people who live here as opposed to commercial uses of things that didn't used to be commercial?
A town that really uses the library, or a town where there is volunteerism, or a town where people don't have money can get a big Thanksgiving dinner, you know, all those sort of things.
At a home, or a town where people with kids can afford to live, and so the school stays open, because otherwise it might cook.
So, I would be hesitant to do it under a community character discussion, but that doesn't mean that there aren't other tools that you could use relative to things that you can do to help ensure diversity, particularly with respect to income levels, and other things that you can do with respect to gentrification, which is commonly, commonly talked about. And then last but not least, and at least in Woodstock that I'm aware of, is the impact of other types of uses using things for different purposes, and the example I would give you here is short-term rentals.
That's exactly where my question is.
And, and clearly, there's a whole host of regulatory discussions with respect to short-term rentals, I won't get into them. It's just that you need to proceed with care if you're going to try to differentiate between short-term rentals as it relates to owner occupancy and short-term rentals as it relates to non-owner occupancy, there's some really good case law that suggests that you should stay away from that.
Interesting.
Yeah, and there's a, the cases actually involves the violation of the Interstate Commerce Clause, which basically says people should have an equal chance to participate, and if you move out and you say you have to be living in the community or live in the house, and in order to have a short-term rental, then, then you're, you have that, that sort of violation. And I believe that is a case out of western, in western state, and don't quote me on the case, I don't remember, I've read it, but I don't remember it. But there are ways around, I mean, there are clearly ways around that, you know, the city of Kingston is in the process of developing a new zoning code, and they found a fairly creative way to deal with that, and there's, you know, there's, there's also a blunt way to deal with it, and just say we're not, we're not into short-term rentals at all, whether you own it or don't. There's a, there's some of that, some of that, there's a number of ways that you can do that. I'll leave it at that, anything else?
No, that's exactly what I wanted to.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, the third bullet here is community character is in part influenced, and I want to emphasize in part influenced by the buildings and structures that exist in the community, and then you mentioned the, the, the natural environment as well. So, has anybody ever seen a community appreciation survey or a community survey that essentially looks at the various things within a community and starts to rank them? So that, those are, those things are usually done as part of a comprehensive plan, there's a number of pictures, and they basically start to say, well, how do you rank this picture, that's called a community preference survey. How do you rank those things? Those are the types of things that you can start to look at and utilize to try to help you, remember that first bullet is trying to define what it's, what you should know as a reviewing agency, what your community character is, you should try to understand it. So that, one of the things you can use is those community preference surveys, and, and to do those things right, you need, you know, you need, you need some, you know, you should incorporate them somewhere when they're finished, somewhere in, in terms of where they fit in your zoning statute or where they fit in your comprehensive plan. Anybody have questions on community preference surveys? I can tell you a very interesting story, we did a, we did a training seminar for planning board members that looked at community preferences, and it was in relationship to density. Because there's always this question with respect to, I mean, in, in, I have a name for it, it's called it's too big itis, no matter what is proposed, it's too big to start with. It's so, we took a look and worked with a consultant, and they came through and they said, we were, we did it online, it was really neat because the, the people that were online could actually vote their preferences online. And almost to every slide that we used that looked at density, the slide that was preferred, the picture that was preferred, was a greater density than the one that wasn't. The example I would give you, which I was really surprised at, was the difference between the preference in terms of large, large, lot development in fields versus essentially community development in, in high, in denser subdivisions. And then when we start, we started to look at that and do pictures that basically said, guess the density, here's, here's a development, guess the density. And in general, the density that was, was, was the closest in terms of the ones that will guess the most was a lot less dense than the development actually was. And so what you can start to see is, is that good design and attention to detail is really important in terms of setting the feel and tone and character of some of the developments that you, that, that occur. And the other thing I would say is, most zoning statutes, if they don't have design guidelines in them, most zoning statutes and most planning boards are very reluctant to begin a design discussion. Whether it be the architectural elements associated with the building, whether it be placement, placement on the building and the lot, whether it be where parking lots go, landscaping, the type of landscaping it use, where it is. They tend to sort of stick to the basics, which is, we're supposed to, you know, hide it from the neighbor, shed it back so much from the street. And then sort of, once we get past that, the rest is left to the developer. Whether it be a slope roof, or whether it be what color, what color the building is, what fenestrations are on the building, whether there's, whether there's any stone on the building or not stone on the building, all of those things are design discussions that a lot of planning boards don't want to involve themselves in. Some boards, some, some communities have community design, community design boards, I think Woodstock does.
We do.
You know, so they sort of default to that board. But, but the, the point being is, is that you really need to think about those things if you're going to have a discussion about community character, because it's one of the ways that you can mitigate community character, and it's one of the things that you can talk about when, when it comes to things that you're looking for, there's, there's a good D O S departments, New York State Department's state course that basically says how to get the community you want. And talks about things that you can put in your zoning statute, things that you can do in terms of review process to make sure that that's the case. One of the most recent things that have coming, not that recent, but one of the things that are coming up, I think a lot of boards are working and struggling with, is resiliency, sustainability as it relates to climate change. And I would, I would probably guess that there's not a lot of, not a lot of language in your code that deals with those things. But yet, you're, that's a comfort level that boards have. But when we start talking about architectural review, or we need to do this, or how buildings sit on the site, South Bay City buildings, for example, that becomes a lot less, a lot less comfortable with that, but it's something that you can do and you, and you should think about, and you should begin, begin to start to see how you put it in place. Any questions? I'm not here yet, I'm going to start asking questions.
I have to have a question.
Sure.
I do want to get back to community character for one minute, if you have, and just give an example, if you have a primarily residential area, even if it was historically mixed zone, commercial and residential, but it's been residential for many, 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 many years, so does moving in a commercial property become a question of community character?
So, there's no one answer for that, I'll give you, and I'm not being evasive, what I would say to you is that there is within case law, and within generally accepted standards of how zoning statutes work, right? If the zoning statute allows the use, right, then the question becomes a lot less clear in terms of whether there's a significant impact on community character.
Are there other elements other than community character, though, that can be and should be considered, like impact on the community itself? Or things like priorities for the town, like affordable housing becomes a priority, if something is contrary to that?
So, I, I, I hear what you're saying, the short answer is, is that you have to look at the statutory, the statutory charge in terms of, in terms of doing that. The example I give you with respect to affordable housing is, the town has an inclusionary zoning statute that basically says a portion of any new subdivision or any new multifamily unit has to be affordable, then you have a regulatory structure in terms to say that's, that's what we're going to do there. You have a minimum affordability requirement. We are urging towns to adopt affordability requirements somewhere in the 10% range, and then looking at when, when it kicks in, somewhere in the 10 units or more range. But it's up to the community, but we are urging that, we think that that, we have a program out at the county level now called the Housing Smart Communities Initiative. I know Woodstock has joined, I know Deborah Wong has been engaged with us from the beginning when we did a housing action plan.
She's on the school.
Deborah's been doing a fantastic and wonderful job.
Hi, Deborah.
Hey there, guys. I'll shut up.
In all seriousness, I mean, she's a basic resource in the community, she's very likely to have.
I guess I'm just trying to find out what can be considered regards to the, not only the physical nature of a section of community, but with regard to the people who are living there and the impact of something new and different in the area.
Well, I, new and different is, is.
Well, commercial versus.
Well, the example I would give you is, there's a case out there, and it's, it actually is a case, I think in Ulster County, it was W E O K, which was a radio tower in a town of Lloyd. And the court determined that absent, it was a visual impact study, but absent, the only thing that the town had to essentially go against what was a very rigorous analysis of visual impact by the applicant was some unsubstantiated sentiments from what that visual impact would be by residents and by the board itself. And this was an appellate court case, again, I'm not an attorney. This is an appellate court case where they said, thank you very much, but no thank you, the applicants, the applicants basically exhaustive analysis of what constitutes the visual impact prevalent, and the town's denial was overturned. So, if you're going to basically talk about impacts, then you have to back it up. The examples I would give you that we start to see is the challenge or the charge that somehow certain types of things reduce property values. And you'll hear this, whether it be affordable housing, whether it be certain kinds of uses adjacent to other kinds of uses, and the applicant will come and say, here's a host of studies that basically said that doesn't occur. So, you're, you need, if you're, as a board, if you're going to say, well, we, we believe, you know, we believe it does, then you need something to essentially deal with that issue that's, that's out there right now. And the one court case that cited this, they basically, what it said, and I'm going to paraphrase, that if it's permitted within the zoning district, it's tantamount to a legislative finding that it's, that it's consistent with community terror. So if your town board said, we're going to allow this use, and in particular, we're going to allow this use by special permit, and the applicant can meet all of the requirements in a special permit, because usually there's a set of standards that go with a particular use for a special permit, maybe setbacks, maybe other types of things associated with it, then it's tantamount to essentially saying that if I meet those standards, I deserve that permit.
Would those standards were created in, in the past in things that changed?
Then it would be compounded upon town to essentially amend the standards. So that's, that's literally what we're dealing, I mean, I, I, I always try to think that, that secret doesn't exist in a vacuum, and it doesn't grant any more authority to a board than, than a board within the statute. So when you start to think about how these things work, you really need to think about what the statute says. The other thing is, is that the statute can give you power, this goes back to your question with respect to what else can we do? The statute can give you power that's outside of affordability, that's outside of the secret document. And clearly, in some of these instances, for example, most, right now, you have to.
We do.
It's been a while since I've read that, when's the last time you updated that?
The comp plan.
I think, right, 2018?
So, the point being is, is that there are certain things you can do outside of secret that, that are, are can, can work towards things like I just mentioned with respect to affordability. The other thing, there are certain things that you can do, and town boards has done this, with respect to design. How New Pauls requires home structures and its highway business district to be two stories, and to have a functional second story, and there's some extensions, for example, I think, gas stations and others are exempt, but drugstores, those kinds of things, offices, they have to have a functional second story.
Which could be office space or housing?
Office space or housing, they, they basically want it to be used for housing, that's what they said, they basically wanted, and I quoted the statute wrong, and don't, don't beat me up on it. But I believe that, I believe that the priority is housing, I don't know whether it's a requirement, but the priority is housing. And they've gone through great, through great lengths in terms of reviewing various entities to, to essentially make sure that's the case. They've also, quite frankly, New Pauls, I know New Pauls, I think, has a fairly poor reputation with respect to the, the review process, but they've done a really, really, really good job relative to some of the work that they've done in mainstreams. They've rezoned a whole section of Route 32 coming out of Village to higher densities, they've just completed a project on there called Net Zero, it's a three-story project. To, I think it's an asset to the village as you come in, it's a great gateway to the village to clearly what was there. And those are things I think that you need to take into account. The other thing, I think, people look to the idea of community character is that we're moving in and we're creating a clash between what's there now versus what's proposed, and always what's proposed is worse than what's there now. But I also want to take the position that there are a number of commercial areas in communities that are just not well-planned out, and they reflect teachings from the seventies, right? Now I come in, I want to build a building and it's modernized, and quite frankly, is not in keeping with the rest of the, the stuff that's there, it's, it's a lot better. Is that a significant impact on community character? Because it's different, or is, or is it something that the community's new standard says that's what we want? But I want you to keep that in mind, that just because it's different doesn't mean it's, it's, it's not, it's not appropriate.
I think I'm only on the first pitch.
You are.
Melissa, I think there are a few people who are on Zoom who may want to ask questions.
Thanks. I see Deb's hand up, so we'll let Deb speak.
There's a question, there's a question.
I was saying, the community, the community has an interest in taking care of a stem of over gentrification. If, if we want to use that word, or overdevelopment, let's put it that way. What other than, than community character can be used, and also what can be used to take into account the lifestyle of the people in the community, the neighbors who will be impacted, let's say, by additional noise and lighting and traffic and increases and all of that? people in the community, the neighbors who will be impacted, let's say by additional noise and lighting and traffic and increases and all of that.
So clearly when it comes to noise, traffic and that kind of thing, there are really good standards for that. I mean, we don't have to, you don't have to reach into community character to have those discussions. Uh, there are well-accepted standards for that. Communities at some peril could change those standards, but the Department of Environmental Conservation, Department of Transportation, Department of Environmental Conservation has a su- significant amount of standards with, with respective traffic noise and others. And there's all, all kinds of guidelines in terms of how you do that work and how you measure that, those impacts. So I would reach into a community character discussion to talk about, to talk about those impacts. But the question you asked me with respect to gentrification, I wouldn't reach into community character to talk about gent- gentrification. I would reach into other, I would basically, the, the planning board is not only responsible for reviewing applications, it's also responsible, and as, as you probably know, because of the other work that we've done, also responsible to going back to the town board and saying, these are things we'd like to change. This is what we're noticing. And these are things we'd like to change. And this is how, these are recommendations that we can make to change the, the comprehensive plan. These are, these are things that we can, we can, um, we can do to, to, to change the zoning statute. I don't like the term gent- gentrification. I kind of like the term diversity or, or equity um, rather than gentrification, but I understand where it's coming from. It's a well-established term in, in, in the vernacular. But my point being is, is that I think if you're going to do that, you would go to the zone.
Rest for the wicked, huh?
Yeah, no.
I see you, Alex.
My problem is I can't see hands.
I know.
So.
Hi, hi, yeah, I just have a question, um, which is that coming from a different perspective, when I hear community character, I start to be concerned that it's something that is used as a weapon to prevent us from getting, for example, housing that maybe some parts of the community might find undesirable, but that we need. Um, and so how do you, do you have a recommendation for a balance of using this as a tool to um, keep the values of a community, but also keep the values of what a community might look like, you know, going into the future and what we want it to look like without having those kinds of concerns, because it definitely can be used as a weapon of like, oh, we don't want you know, multifamily housing to look like multifamily housing, or we don't want this, or we don't want this. When the reality is that we are a changing community. Um, we're going to continue to be a changing community. Um, and and particularly as more and more people are looking to safer places to be, you know, as the climate is changing, um, you talked about, you know, resilience, things like that. We're positioned in a, in a pretty solid place for that in many ways. It's desirable to a lot of people. How do we allow for that without shutting them out by saying, oh, that's not, that's, that's not in the character of this community? Because it definitely sounds like a scary phrase in a lot of ways.
Yeah, and I, and I think you're right. Um, are you finished? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, um, I think you're right. I think um, the concern about community character, and this, I, this is, this is my uh, discussion of this. The concern about community character is, it's, it's a bit amorphous. Um, and it goes back to what I said, I know it when I see it, kind of question. Um, and a way to deal with that is there are fairly simple ways to deal with it. And it goes back to how you get the community you want. Um, and that includes changing the community you have. Um, and the example I would give you is just two really good examples. One is design standards or design guidelines. Now, design guidelines are exactly that. They're guidelines. Design standards are a little bit different. Design standard says thou shalt do this. Uh, design guideline says, well, the planning board may or may not, or the, whatever implementing agency may or may not require that, but this is what we're looking for. Um, I think Woodstock has a, an overlay district. Uh, they have a.
City cover. We have a city cover. We have a number of, but that one is.
And, and, and there are certain things that you expect within that overlay. There's colors, I would presume, there's, there's what you can clear.
Visibility.
Well, there, and, and you've used a precedent to set those things, right? You basically said that, that these are the colors we like, these are things you can't do up here, these are like certain things that we, we were concerned about.
One of those cases.
Glazing, and you should. Um, but my point being is, is that going back to, to Alex, right? Going back to Alex's question, what you do is you start to carry that through into the other areas of the town rather than just the scenic overlay district. And you begin to start to carry those same kinds of policies, those same kinds of concerns with respect to colors, relationship to the street, relationship to the neighbors, uh, how landscaping is presented, where parking lots go. You carry that, those kinds of things down and you make sure that applicants are aware of them when, when you, when you, uh, when they, when they submit. And the other thing that you do is if those, if, A, if they're design guidelines, my, our recommendation has been in the past for the applicant is not to have the planning board basically try to guess what the, how the applicant needs the design guidelines. But rather to have the design guidelines in a fashion number one, two, number three, number four, whatever they are. Um, here's parking, here's fenestrations, here's landscaping, here's glazing, here's a relationship to the road, here's how we access roads. And to have the applicant as part of an application, write a report that says, we've looked at your design guidelines and this is how we feel that we meet them.
Does this apply to private, single-family houses or?
Well, you need a permit. If they don't require a permit, then you can't require it. But if they do require. Well, they don't require planning. Generally, single-family homes don't have, don't require.
That's my point.
Well, so if, if you're really concerned about that, then what we end up doing is you incorporate it so that the, the, the building inspector, the zoning enforcement officer essentially, essentially can, can look at those things just as a planning board. So in rather than a discretionary decision or what I would call an iterative decision involving the board, it's, it's, it's essentially pushed off on the zoning enforcement app that says, he met these, these design guidelines and that's why he got the permit. Right? So those are the things you can do. And there's a lot of that going on nowadays where, where in order to streamline the, the review process, some of the routine discretionary decisions are put off and they're placed in, and they're placed in, in a, in the individual's hand. They're not ministerial to to a certain extent, but they are, they are placed in the zoning enforcement officer's hand. And then the, the board has some oversight or, or at least some, some indication that things are going wrong, that you have a problem. You have, I think, you used to have, and obviously still do. You had a site plan review was required for certain kinds of things, but for smaller types of things, the board can determine by itself that site plan, the intent, site plan review was met and then waive it as.
Absolutely.
So though, that's, that'll give you an example of what we could do to take it to the next step further, particularly with respect to uh, individual, individual buildings or individual uh, uh, work from single-family homes. Taking that next step further. So the answer to Alex's question, one is, one is, one is design guidelines and the next level of that is design standards. Uh, we have recommended, particularly in certain kinds of areas, that we talk about design standards. And the example I would give you is historic districts. Um, and sometimes there are historic district boards that already had their design standards. And so that goes, they, they.
Yeah, Deborah has a, has a question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Deb. You're up.
Hi, thanks. Um, so I'm going to back up a little bit, Dennis.
Okay.
Um, uh, because in talking about, um, as you know, I, I co-chair this housing oversight task force and we're working on some zoning updates to reflect, um, uh, some of the goals, actually to reflect the goals in the 2018 comprehensive plan, which have not been updated in the zoning. So, um, and we have been looking at the two, the, the notion of community character and what is articulated in the comprehensive plan as a guide to help define direction. Um, and, and the comprehensive plan talks about environmental values and talks about the need to address housing options. So, and then ob- obviously how that is done in code is sort of the separate thing, but the hope is that the uh, strengthening the connection, uh, as I understand it, the zoning should be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So we're bringing those two into alignment is going to help with community character, um, sort of building that sense of what is a community character. Um, uh, Peter mentioned artists, talked about scenic. We've also talked about diversity uh, of, uh, whether it's uh, architectural, but also in terms of, of, um, as Judith was saying, in terms of the population itself, in terms of diversity. So we're seeing in the language in the comprehensive plan, opportunities to take those principles and then put them into code. I'm interested to know um, because there, there was a survey done. There was a lot of work done in developing comprehensive plan. And I think and it wasn't that many years ago, and maybe there's a way for us to um, bring that back into uh, the community and our awareness, since we're having a very robust conversation now about all these things. And it's really exciting to see how many different ways we can come at this at this issue. And I'm wondering outside of seeker, to what extent do you see the comprehensive plan helping to guide this process as we go forward?
Oh, it's, it's critical. It's, but down in my mind, it's critical. And to the extent that your comprehensive plan not only talks about community character, but actually illustrates community character, you're much better off. Um, I think one of the one of the things that I'm most disappointed in with respect to where we are from a technology perspective versus where we are from a, uh, a code perspective is that we have an amazing amount of technology that can do graphically what we're trying to do with words. Uh, and I think that the old saying, a picture is worth a thousand words.
Meaning the code?
Yeah, I mean, and if you want to, why don't we skip this slide and go to the next one? So.
I've been talking about form-based codes since the first year I came on the planning board and it's like.
So one of the thought, yeah, one of the things that form-based code does besides give you a whole sense of what form you're talking about, and, and people are generally accepting, accept the fact that if I can see it and I can understand it and I know what's going, I can understand what be, be able to build, be built in certain places in town, I'm much more comfortable in terms of what my zoning statute means. The, the thing that people are less comfortable about form-based code than does control use. Generally, if you meet the form, we're not concerned about the. Um, generally, I said, but they, they do control use to a certain extent with respect to transit. Kingston is engaged and I think Kingston zoning statute has, um, has existed since 1968. Um, and it has been, um, hacked at, um, clubbed on. Anything that you can think that you should do wrong with the zoning statute and the zoning, and the zoning map probably happened in Kingston between 1968 and 2024. Um, and that's not a problem with respect to the city. It just reflects the idea that the attention that the city was given to its land use forms, uh, because there wasn't a lot of change. Um, and it wasn't a lot of building activity. Um, was different than the attention it was giving to things that had to do like water, sewer, road systems, et cetera. Um, and so, you know, if you, I used to call it designer zoning. If you needed something, you went to the city and the city took a look and said, well, that works, we think that works. And, um, and amended the zoning statute. Um, so now they went through a 2025 plan update, comprehensive plan update, and they've decided, I think with amazing amount of, uh, of support from, from elected officials and from the planning board uh, and from others to go to a form-based code. Uh, and this form-based code, form-based codes generally, what they do is they basically divide, they usually do. They divide the community into what they call transits. Um, and so within the Broadway corridor, there are certain kinds of buildings and certain heights and certain things that they're saying, this is what we want to do. Um, and when you move out of the Broadway corridor, there may be what they call special district transect. So for example, Golden Hill in our area and some of the other areas in the city are, are deemed to be, they're different in the areas surrounding them. And so we've made them into a special district transect. We're going, we're going to take another look at that. Uh, but go to the next, go to the next. This slide does this. Oh, so they, so what they, when you go into the code and you look, they start defining buildings. They tell you that this is the kind of building that goes in this transect and this is what it looks like. And here are the things that, here's the characteristics of it. And then they give you a picture and they say, that's what we're talking about. So if you're, if you're reviewing the code or you're implementing the code or you're applying for the code, you know what's expected in any particular area within the city.
But you, it doesn't, the uses doesn't come into.
There are some use restrictions here, as I recall, but generally form-based code, what we're trying to do is you're trying to establish the form of the building and how it relates to the street and how it relates to its neighbors.
And would you permit like a 20-story skyscraper?
No, uh, but I, I will tell you what it does do. I mean, for example, we took a look at the Broadway corridor and suggested that they think their original form-based code had three or four stories in the Broadway corridor, whatever that number was. And we suggested, we looked at the Broadway corridor, we suggested most of these buildings are higher than that. Well, I think you think about a different, a, a different, a different height limitation. So they think they've gone to four or five stories in the Broadway corridor in terms of looking at that transect. Well, my point being is, and this is to Deborah's point, and I think somebody else has a question, I apologize. Uh, but my point being is a form-based code gives you the opportunity as a board to know, this is what the community has telling us what we're enforcing. Right? And it gives me as a member of the community to say, if I move here, I live in this transect. Right? This transect allows this kind of buildings. So the questions with respect to community character sort of get, they sort of bubble down. Right? Because it's not amorphous anymore. We've defined it. Getting to the community you want.
The community character is really a function of design in the environment to more, and then questions of whether the usage fits in or the impact on, let's say, the human population of the area are really separate issues from community character.
That's, that's a question. Yeah, or like Judith said, the disification of a place. It becomes nothing but rental, you know, short-term rentals and restaurants and gift shops.
So I don't want to limit myself because the Department of Environmental Conservation doesn't limit itself to the section that says it's only about it's only about the physical structures. I would also say it's also about the natural structures. We haven't, we haven't discussed that. But they go on to say that there are other things that may be involved in, in the community character discussion and that has to do with um, services, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, or the example, I think they use, one of the examples that they use is affordable housing example. And I think they use the example of attracting a whole lot of people to areas where there aren't a lot of people now. I'm not sure that those, those things are community character. And I'm not sure that it's not better off thinking about other ways that we deal with those things.
But those are things the planning board can consider.
Absolutely, yeah.
That's just not going to be the character perhaps.
Yeah, uh, depending upon the zoning statute that you consider and depending upon what's in, what's in their site plan review statute and their special permit statute.
And, and let me just ask one more question. If if they're in the, if there's the process of updating those zoning laws, which we understand is happening now, should any major decisions be held in advance while that process is going through?
Well, let me, let me take that, let me take that, um, in terms of practicality versus, um, idealism. I don't want to use that term, but I couldn't think of another one, so I apologize for it because I'm not an idealist. Um, but.
Why not?
I knew I, I knew I'd upset someone.
I'm a practical idealist, but I'm an idealist.
It, it is sometimes advantageous to fight off the, the, the piece that you need to. Right? Rather than essentially sit there and try to say to yourself, I think we should do the whole thing. And two years later, you haven't done anything. And from my perspective. And from my perspective. The planning board can be a really good. Sounding board to say. These are the things that are giving us the most trouble, and these are the things that we'd like to have more guidance on.
To the town board.
To the town board. And then, if you're working with, for example, a housing commission or environmental commission or, or. Some other community services commission, then you could say. We, we, we think that these things are appropriate for us to consider recognizing the fact that this is only a first step, we have other steps that we want to take. But I don't want, I don't, I would want to freeze the process and. The example I would give, and I think it's a Woodstock example, the San Antonio Associates did a comprehensive plan for this town many, many, many years ago. Right? And it had all kinds of maps in it, it was, it was really one of the things, when we reviewed it. It was one of those plans where you say, somebody finally basically are going to base a comprehensive plan, not just on goals. But actually understanding the community of the building. Well, you, you, you could have, you could have literally could have said anything worse. Because now, now there was really, now there was a sense of what we should build here versus there, and we shouldn't say this versus that. And that didn't match with what everybody thought was, should be done in the community. So they spent years. I think Peter Fairweather and I think came back twice. Basically discussing the fact that they didn't want to adopt that comprehensive plan because it has, it had a map based component that was. At least enough that they could understand where things were going and what we're, how we make decisions with respect to zoning. So we finally suggested, I think the last time we were here, we suggested. That rather than adopt the entire comprehensive plan, which had all the maps in it. Why don't you just adopt the executive summary, which said, this is what the maps will show you. And that, and I'm not sure whether that ever got adopted, or they basically said, we think we're going to go back and redo them. With back to my disappointment with respect to what's in zoning codes. The thing that's disappointing about what's in comprehensive plans. Are when we have goal, goals and objectives with no geographic location. Goals and objectives with no geographic location, literally basically go, well, we're going to leave it to somebody else to make the decision.
Let me go back a moment to the question of services. When we think about affordable housing. One of the things we have to think about. Is that in a community that is aging. And where. A lot of homes are owned by people who are not here full time, and many of them are older people. To the extent that we can't house. Younger people. We won't have. A fire department. Or an EMT. Because those are volunteers or they're very low paid, and it all depends on people who are young enough to take a big role in volunteering. And that's mostly people who can't afford to live here. So it is partly a question of who the people are in the community. But that's. Tightly connected to the question of services.
Diversity, equity. Those are the types of things we're talking about, how do you achieve that? It's a, it's a difficult thing.
Whether the community character can think about that question is kind of where I'm going with it.
So there are things that you can do that are different. And outside of. The community character question. There are things that you can't do. The example I would give you is. If you require. A certain amount of the housing to be affordable in a, in a development. Can you say that that housing has to be made available to? Town residents? Or to specific towns, veterans, fire company, people, etc. As yes.
I don't think what we've been working on points that way.
And the reason I don't know the answer to that.
It points to, you know, affordability as based on income.
The reason, the reason I say I don't know whether to answer that is yes, and I'm assuming there's no federal dollars here, because clear if there's federal dollars here, there's a different discussion. The reason of that is, is that the fair, the fair housing law applies. And the intent to discriminate is important, so depending upon. That interpretation, and I don't know the answer myself. I would tread very, very, very carefully if you're starting to think about. Preferences in terms of affordability and how you improve them.
No, clearly it's something about.
Yeah, okay, and clearly if you, clearly if you have a federal housing project, a little bit of housing tax credit, Rocco project, a little bit of housing tax credit. I think there's another one in challenges USDA project. Those have specific rules with respect to preferences, and generally. It's difficult to apply a geographic preference without a study and an indication of need, etc., etc. But the thing that I would tell you is, this is a, I, this is my conversation with some of the economic development folks and some of the other towns. Is there's an enormous need for, for senior housing, given what we're seeing from demographics. But if only thing we build to senior housing, we have an economy that depends on work. So where do those folks live? So it's that balance.
Yeah.
In terms of what it has. So one of the things that the county just did, we identified a site on Golden Hill. That had a former jail, and there's some, there's some really great. Not irony, but really great synergy with respect to turning the former jail site into the Fort Lauderdale. In my opinion. Hundred and sixty four units of affordable housing, we're going through the approval processes right now, the city has given us approvals, we're working on other things that we need from the city, zoning has been changed. Applications are in. But when we wrote the RFP to decide what we were going to build and who was going to build it. What we said is, is we want an intergenerational housing, housing project. That mixes all the needs associated with support housing, senior housing, and workforce housing. So the project that has now designed. Has eighty units of senior housing, of those units, some of them will be devoted to frail seniors and supportive housing. It has eighty four units of workforce housing, which will range from thirty percent AMI. To eighty percent AMI, overall, the hundred and sixty four units will come in at around fifty five to sixty percent AMI in terms of, in terms of how they run out. It also has a day care center. And it has, and it has a community facility, community facilities, and it has about. I can say about two or two and a half acres of green space and parkland.
Now, everybody knows AMI is adjusted median income.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Yeah.
Adjusted. Adjusted median, median income, it's how you define housing burdenedness.
Yeah, it basically, it basically takes a look at the median income in an area and basically says. If you have this, if this median income, this is what, these are the levels that people can afford. And generally, if you're looking at low income housing tax credits, those levels have to be below eighty percent. And generally, if you want to get funded, they have to be below sixty percent. That's general, but I mean, that's the example I would give you of trying to basically find that balance between senior, the needs for senior housing and the need for workforce housing.
And what was meant by support?
Support of housing, frail seniors, for example, would be one, there are other support housing programs that are out there, disabled individuals. Veterans, there's another support housing programs out there as well.
I just, I want to hit on Dennis, I don't hate to interrupt you, but the zoning proposal amendments that Judith's been working on and Deb's been working on. Will not change the use table, yes, they're writing the code much better. And, and doing some clearing up of stuff, but it's not going to change the use code that's in place, just so you guys know, and. There's a law about if, if applications come into the planning board. And the law is in place at a certain time, and the law changes. It gets hairy on what you can apply and when.
It's actually in the constitution, ex post facto, I think.
So I just, I just thought it was really important to point that out in that conversation, the question just started, let us continue.
No, that's fine.
Excuse me for a minute, other people have questions besides in the room. If, whenever you have a chance.
Fine, I'm good.
If, if people use the hand raised thing.
I have been, I've had it up for about five straight minutes and more, all of us have done the hand, been there, done that.
Sorry, I'm not paying attention to this screen, I'm not even looking at it.
Um, so I just wanted to move back to, we were looking at, since we still have this slide up. The Kingston Form Based Code, which is based on the transect that Dennis was talking about. I'm on the Housing Committee with Deborah Dewan and others, and I did an extensive reading with, and I put up in the notes. A whole bunch of resources, definition for the transect. But it also has to do with the missing middle, which is exactly what you're looking at as well, that all this research for the missing middle. I put up information there too, the research for the transects, which has to do with the Center for New Urbanism. And Smart Growth Movements together that created that, it's a different. Philosophical or ideological or paradigm way of writing zoning. Versus zoning that most of the nation has is based on quote unquote interpretation. What's really nice or advantageous, and I think that's what Dennis was pointing out. Is that with the transect, with new urbanism, this type of zoning, it's very. Detailed oriented so that everybody understands what the goals are, what the rules, the standards, or the guidelines are. So we. Little time. Huh?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the screen and you were waiting.
And I can actually see those, but I can't see people who don't do that, because it pushes the picture of that person up to the top when they use that hand raised thing. Now, David. Eckert, I think it is, put in a comment about the design guideline, the county design guideline.
Yeah. Next slide?
Yes.
I think it's the next slide. And there it is, there's the Ulster County Playing Board Design Guidelines, I think they were done in two thousand seventeen or eighteen. They are online as well as in PDF form. You can certainly just Google Ulster County Playing Board Design Guidelines, they'll come up. That design guideline was developed using, used a consultant from the Regional Plan Association. And it is really detailed in terms of. The various things that you can, that you could look at it here, and they, they, we define edges, centers, quarters. There's, there's places, we define places within the design guidelines, and for each place. That's defined in the design guidelines, you can go into that place and look at the, the form that's there, you can look at best practices that are there, etc. And then, from there, you can also go in and look at best practices with respect to landscaping, with respect to parking lots, and finally. Which wasn't in the RPA design guidelines, when we, when we worked, we worked with them on a rural design guidelines, we actually defined a rural place. And to reflect some of the concerns that, and some of the people that helped us do this review process. Reflect some of their concerns, so there is a rural design guideline, we sometimes cite them, we don't cite them enough, in my opinion, I've had this conversation with staff and board. But we, but these things are really, are a really good. Resource for design guidelines in terms of things that you want to look at, and they're, they're significantly more detailed than. Anything I've seen out there that's generalist in terms of accounting.
When we were working with NAMM on. What kinds of things ought to be true for a, let's say, a tight place? And we ended up with, it needs to resemble a private house. Which is a very general kind of thing, and it needs to have some. Consolid interest, but there was a tendency to go to, it has to have at least one of the following, you know, a turret, a bay window. A porch, you know, very specific kinds of things, and I lived in Michigan for a long time, and there's a town called Frankl. Where the town guidelines require everything to look like the variant, and it's kind of a joke. So I was very sensitive to over controlling these things. And we have a that thing, but we were pointing to this document as a, as a useful thing for us to incorporate. Anything else?
Dennis, I think one of the. Things that the town, that the planning board struggles with now. Areas, you know, we have the village commercial, the hamlet commercial, we have neighborhood commercial sectors. And those are areas that commercial activities are permitted. And as they come into us and as they. Get moving forward. We seem to have a contest back and forth between the residents that live there, saying that. This commercialism is, is, is not the. Not the. Character of the neighborhood. Because there's. But commercial buildings are permitted, and I think you pointed out before, as long as the planning board reviews a commercial operation and it meets all the. All the. Exony, all the requirements. Then it is in the community character, is that, I see it?
There's always a, there's always a tendency to sort of. Work on the concerns that, in terms of this discussion that need to be undertaken, and the last thing I want to suggest is that. Somehow, if you meet the minimum requirements of the zoning statute, you're allowed to move forward. Planning board is there to essentially have discussions about, it is a. It is a decision making process that's iterative between the planning board and the applicant. And those kinds of discretionary discussions, I think, make for a significantly better place. I, I would, I would look at scans. At someone that comes in and say, I meet all the requirements of the zoning code, therefore give me my permit. Because if that's the case, then you're not needed.
I love the word mitigation, like that's, I feel like you come here in the beginning and we mitigate until everyone is.
Well. What I would say is that. The. The neighborhood. And the people that are having this discussion. Are. Protecting their investment. Their families, their children. And. The last time I was at a, I was at a ribbon cutting for an affordable housing project, and one of the things that I always enjoy is they usually have one of the people that have moved into the project speak. And this gentleman got up and spoke, and he spoke about how much it meant to him to have a home. And. He addressed the fact that it was really difficult to get that approval, they went through a lot of neighborhood opposition. And so you never, you didn't know where he was going, he was like, you know, well. I don't know, and then he, and he said, I respect them. Because just as much as I wanted a home, they have a right to have a conversation with us about protecting their home and protecting their family. And so what we need to do better is have them understand that I'm not a threat to their home. That the project is not a threat to their home. And I think that's, that's the approach here, the approach is, is it turns, it turns somewhat. To an us and them discussion, or this or that discussion, rather than, rather than a discussion that basically says. We hear the concerns, these, these are ones we can put on the table and work on, these are ones we're going to take off the table and think that, think that they're out of line. And you do that with some. Some care and some concern. That you're listening. And I think if you do that, people, people in the opposition or people that are, have concerns about a project. Feel that they've been hurt, and they feel that what you've done is essentially all you could do. Under, given the circumstances that were there, and you can mitigate their, you can mitigate their concerns. I, I wouldn't say that there are some people that are continuing going to say, I don't care what you do, they just want the project to go away.
But look, if you've got a neighborhood that's always been residential, even though it was in, it was owned, had a commercial. And there are lots of mixed use buildings. And you take a property that has been rental properties for fifty, sixty years. And that is being converted into short term commercial use. That's a real major change in the neighborhood, it's permitted by the zoning. But the objection of people who live across the street from that is a very reasonable one. And that's, what do we do with that?
So your, your hands are somewhat tied, because if you tell me it's permitted, then it's, it's permitted, but I don't think that they're completely tied. So you sort of try to figure out what the concerns are. And dress them to the best that you can, and it may end up being, some things may end up being, you can do onsite. Relative to noise, the example I would give you, some of the event venues that we've seen spring up in various communities.
Including here.
Is that they require all music and everything else to be conducted indoors. Simply said, we're not going to allow you outdoors from a taxi, we're going to build a structure and we're going to put it indoors. Those are one of the things that you can do, the other thing you can do. The example I would give you with respect to traffic. Um, you can start to think about, we're really concerned about traffic, and while the road can handle the traffic, we're really concerned about trucks, et cetera, et cetera. So we're going to limit truck movements uh in terms of time. Uh, or we're going to require um some mitigation. As it relates to crosswalks, or as it relates to raised crosswalks, or speed humps, or something of that nature, to make sure that the neighborhood is safe. Um.
Turn around for emergency vehicles, sorry, I'm just going off on.
Yeah, there's, there's, I mean, there are things that you can do that go beyond what you have to do, in terms of making sure that the project is safe, to, to address neighbors' concern. Uh, one of the things I, I really, I go back, this one neighbor showed up at a meeting, and I was just sitting here, waiting to see. A different topic, and. Who or she, I can't remember now. Said, the real problem I'm having is, is that this driveway comes up right across from my house, and that's my picture window, and I'm going to get the, the, the lights from those people. Moving in and out there at night are going to come right into my house. I think we're to move the driveway fifty feet. Uh, not a, not a major change to be had, come in and circle it around a little bit, but, but it was a, you know, it was a good response from the, from the board. Uh, burning is a really good response, you know, I had this park, I have a little bit of parking lot across from my street. Okay, you're going to six-foot burn the fence with a four-foot fence on top. And you don't see the parking lot. Um, there are things, um, lighting. The, the amount of things that you can require, deal with respect to lighting now, it's just amazing. So, I mean, LED fixtures turn on and off in a, in a heartbeat, they just bang, they don't have, they don't have what they call a straight, a straight time. So, you know, okay, after nine o'clock at night, or whenever you close, your lights, the lights go off and you're allowed security lights. And those security lights are the furthest away from the, the neighborhood, which the design provides security around your building. Here, so there's those kinds of things that you can think about that, that deal with that, and that will come into a neighborhood character discussion. I think that is um, that is really, uh, really an appropriate thing to do, rather than simply say that, by the way, you meet the requirements of the statute. Um, I'll give you another example, however, that um. How many times have you seen um, you'd reviewed a subdivision, probably in the seventies, or, and now it has a cul-de-sac. And the cul-de-sac was designed so it could go to the next lot. Or that's what it's designed, and eventually we have a through road. So developer comes in and he says, well, I want to go, I'm going to use this road and go to the next lot. And the neighborhood goes crazy, the traffic is, you know, if you had a cul-de-sac at the end of your street, you may, you may want to think about sometime. That road's going to go through, there's going to be a through road. And we've seen literally planning boards in various communities turn themselves inside out. To try to make sure that if there was a cul-de-sac that was never used for its intended purposes. You know, it was, well, let's, let's make it go out over here, let's make it go out over there, and for me. One of the things, and, and, or if they do use it, it's, it becomes a emergency access only, and, and only the fire company has a key. Right, and for me. I understand where the neighborhood comes from, but I also understand that there's a broader community concern here. Um, because if everybody's got to go back to the main street to travel for, through the neighborhood, then we get a lot of traffic on the main street that we don't have to have. Uh, so the thought being is, is that we would, we would amend zoning statutes and say for subdivisions, if there's a cul-de-sac and an opportunity to connect. The adjoining, the adjoining lot, planning board must do that. Because then you don't have to take the flag. And, and the applicant doesn't have to take the flag. Then what ends up happening, this requirement in the statute, and here's the reason why. So there's those kinds of things that can be done, but I would, I would, my, I, I absolutely positively understand. And, and certainly would uh, would take into account. Community, community concerns in terms of approvals, I don't think you just say, and I think most applicants are now sophisticated enough that they understand. Uh. And the other thing is, is that just because. The numbers work, don't, don't, doesn't mean the project works. Uh, we've seen a lot of projects come in. That um. If a unit counts in, they can get, you know, they can get the setbacks done. Uh, but at the end of the day, you look at the lot and you look at the land and you say. Working for us, there's something that we need to think about changing. Um, not in the reverse of that, we had a situation in one of the communities we looked at, and it was a. Fairly large lot, it had water, it had sewer. And a gentleman proposed to use, and he put the use of the center of the lot, he said. Why don't you move this, this way? Think about a building pot over here, a building pot over there, and a shared parking lot in the middle, and they were like, well, that's not what I'm doing. And, and I went to the planning board and I said. You have an opportunity where you have a significant amount of public investment, you have sidewalks, you have water, you have sewer, you have street lighting district, et cetera, et cetera. Why don't you make him do that? Maybe he doesn't want to do it now, but there's no reason that he can't put the lot, what he's trying to propose will fit over here, it fits fine. And it goes back to what I said when we started. It's very difficult for planning boards to start to think about moving things on, on the site that they need the zoning statute. Very reluctant planning board will say, I, I think we have a better map strap. Yeah, but it's something, if you're going to have a conversation about, to the BK, having a conversation about community character. Should have a conversation about how site development works even within the district's dispatch. I think I've said enough, thank you. Any questions from the audience?
We've got a few more slides.
No, we're good.
This is a horror show.
Yes. But if you look at that slide, that slide, I, I'll be just angry, that slide basically says, the community character discussion. That slide, on the bottom is, they decided, they said that this, this, this community wanted something had stone, heavy beams, et cetera, et cetera. Those were their sort of broad design guidelines. So when you look at IHOP, you don't see IHOP with that kind of heavy beams and stone on, especially at California site. Uh, but that's, that gives you a sense of the response, even though it's what I would call franchise architecture, to give you a sense of what, what the response can be to a. To even a, a, a broadly written community guide.
Yeah, we don't allow drive-throughs.
Thanks, everyone, thank you, have a good, enjoy everybody, enjoy their rest of their holiday. Yesterday was Passover, right?
No, next week, next week. Stock's on the, on Wednesday night, I think.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank God, we got, we still got some.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, unfinished business. We have to. Resolution. Can we, might be on that one? This is for the SDR transfer.
Yes.
It's just, uh, we got to approve the resolution.
And mention that we approve it.
Make a motion for it?
Perfect, I love it.
On favor?
Hi.
Okay. It's just a transfer. It's a short-term.
Thank you so much. I'll talk to you soon.
But the. SUP goes with the land, so the new owner of the SUP. So that's that, uh, so uh, we have to discuss and make a motion to approve the memo. And attachments to the town board supervisor McKenna, that's where they scenic overlay. Uh, listing that we want to send to the real estate people. So uh, is, everybody read it?
Yes, yeah.
The way it is?
It was good.
We all kind of agreed online, so.
Yeah, as long as you guys are all on board, I'll, I'll shoot that over tomorrow.
Okay, we're good with that.
We got a couple of thank yous.
Go ahead.
The other thing is, I noticed, the other day I was driving up Erie Hill Road, there's a traffic counter, you know, the, the road counters on Erie Hill Road, I said, well, that's a town road. And I usually stumble at counties, so I asked Melissa if the planning board could get that data, because that would help us in, in any big developments. Or anything like that. Well, I met Bill the other day, and he said absolutely, get any data that they do those counts on. He actually showed me that, it tells you the time of day, the amount of traffic. Really good information that we could use.
So we learned we have a resource, and we can ask Bill to put in place traffic counters, when we have like larger subdivisions or larger site plans. Which Peter and I both were like super excited over.
Yeah, it's fair.
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, um, we did have the scenic overlay code, uh, we had a couple of corrections, I don't see it on here, but it was so higher.
Well, I had picked up a comma, and you had said something about some glazing.
I, I wrote them down, I can tell you guys the three that I'm going to do.
That uh, the shiny, shiny walls and shiny roofs should be, or shouldn't.
So our three edits are a comma that needs to go in between, what was it?
In between foliage and drainage weeds, because there is.
There are new ways, they're two separate things, um. Prohibition of highly reflective materials instead of, what was the other word?
Should be avoided.
Avoided, avoided, so we would like prohibition, yeah, prohibition, prohibition. And the third one is more than twenty-five percent, it says less.
Yeah, the way it reads, it says, and the glazing, it says that there's less than twenty-five percent of glazing that. It means, it should say if there are more.
I'm noticing that they caught our problem with elevations, though. It's any wall.
Yes.
Not the end of elevation, because the elevation shows walls are set back from each other as if they were flush.
But I'm going to, I'm going to put that together tonight, and these, those are the three edits, but.
It's exactly what we, I sent a private note to Bill, and I copied Melissa, and I said, you guys got it, this is just what we want.
Judy and I had a conversation, and I have to tell you all the trainings that you and I did, and we all did. And all our risks that we made, and came up with everything, I felt like it was my checklist was literally like, check, 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 check. Like, we were so happy, Judy and I had a conversation, like, I felt hurt, we all felt hurt, I felt hurt.
Huge improvement.
And it is written, some of you can't read it.
Yes.
It's clear, it's logical.
There's no contradiction.
I don't know who wrote it, whether it was, you know, Ed Sanders, or Laura Ritchie, or Connor, or who, but somebody. Who knew how to use the language so that people would understand it and be able to act on it, it's great.
So uh, uh, Bill McKenna, the supervisor, wrote us a letter saying that the town board has agreed to. Accept and review the planning board's changes in the scenic overlay, so now we're going to send it to them.
This is so, these are so small, and they will see the lot to come in immediately, yes, it's like. Finally.
So it's very, very well done. So uh, I guess we all unanimously agree to send it on to the town board. Anything else?
Now we, now we need something about clear-cutting that isn't in the overlay.
What, what, there was a call in Hudson Valley one today about tree, uh, strengthening the tree protections here, did anyone read that?
I looked at the paper, but I missed that.
Missed that, but there was one other thing, one other note was that, we, in the, in the document, you was, used the word arborist.
Yep, I have, I have that too, so there's more, yes, thank you for bringing that up, but then someone walked in my office and the phone rang, and I forgot that list, yes.
And on a separate note, by the way. Um, regarding wetlands, uh, because the Bora, the one and I spoke about, a lot about. Improving the wetland law, one of the things that we've come up with is to, we've identified two wetland delineators. I'm one, but I can't do it for the town, so we found two others, one that did the famicus wetlands. Okay, and, and Deborah has another one, so that when we. Identify a lot that looks like it has wetlands on it. And we want to know if it really does, in other words, if, if, if the applicant gets their delineator and everything else, and we have questions. We can ask the applicant to uh, to put up escrow for one of these two guys to go out and just say, yeah. You know, this is, this is.
It's, it's Paul Rubin, however?
Just like.
He was the guy who worked on, um, Terramore.
Do you know if it's Paul Rubin?
Yeah, I don't know the name.
Well, well, I can get them.
But just like we did with the foresters, the same idea that we could then have.
I love that we are building like.
The reason being is, we're supposed to have a wetlands inspector on the town. Uh, you know.
I mean, that was part of our suggestion.
But it's, it's, it's what Bill wants, is that instead of the town having afford to have a wetlands inspector on board, the applicant will have to pay for it. Yeah, and it makes sense, if they're the one doing development, why should the local taxpayers?
As long as we have people we trust to do a good job of it. And you know, we always say, what I see on my map is. An indication that there's something that needs to be looked at on.
Right.
We know the property lines are not good.
Right.
And we have some reason to think that not all the wetlands information is perfect either.
Right. This way we'll have a, we'll get the names and then we'll vote to um. Have them on board, just like a uh, just like a planner.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been, we've been pretty good with one of the one people, I haven't had any issue with escrow.
He's really pushed back on the escrow, hasn't he?
No. No, I haven't had anyone, I mean, I, I sugarcoat it.
So we are, we are going to get, for the first time, for the first time I've been here over twenty years, we're going to get a month off.
John said to me, I don't know if this happened. I mean, it kind of happened as a fluke, because I'll be in Syracuse at that training for a while, please. Um, but it's nice.
And we've got two holidays that affect Thursdays.
Yes, and um. I plan on catching up a little bit and just breathing a little bit, but we'll be back at full doors, May, May fourth, we'll be back, um. At our AS public hearing scheduled for the eighteen. So, yeah.
So I just wanted to uh, show you what anybody else wants to look at, that this is what we do in survey, to put property lines on. An ortho, exactly, I mean to the hundred.
I want those work, those, I don't know where those are, I get the ones from the state, and they only do them every three to five years.
You know, this is where.
That's a higher resolution image.
Where Jerry Washington and we all went back and forth. This is state planning coordinates, and it's the only way it works, I know Jerry kept saying, well, any coordinate system will work, no. Only state plan work, and if you do it, you're exact, I mean. To the tip of a pen.
What kind of basis?
It's, it's called state plan coordinates.
Well, it's a, it, the, the thing is, there are a lot of different ways of measuring where something is on the globe.
That was saying, they broke the state into sections, because the state curves and has all different, you know, geological positions. And your coordinate system varies slightly, so they made it exact in certain areas. So we're New York State East is, is our coordinate system. Very slightly because of the.
For most of the things that I do, it doesn't matter, but if I was using that level of precision. I could put the, the tax maps into that same coordinate system. Whether they would be accurate is still a question, since they were built from paper documents.
Take a look, you'll see how, how exact we can do property lines.
That, I really would like to have the ability to do that right now, as you know. I mean, I don't get in that close, I don't see this level of detail from the stuff we get from the state. And it's every three to five years, so it gets obsolete pretty fast. So I need to talk to somebody in, in. County Planning Office about where these are.
Yeah, be a way to approach it, but just, I just wanted to see how exactly we can make it.
I made a phone call to try to get um, access to the MLS when we post the bill to, because I have people call our office every day and ask me about parcel and. You know, and I'm, I'm nice, and I'm kind, and I give you what information I have, so.
How are we doing for a, a new member, any?
No word.
No word, any guys, anybody know anybody?
Yeah.
We need another member.
Yeah, I mean, I, I sent over the three people that left, but I haven't heard anything yet, and I took friends' name on, but I'm still, so.
Here, as a certified wetlands delineator, can you tell us to what standard they will help?
What standard?
Yes, but, you know, how do we know you're going to do a good job?
What the standard for certified, it's, it's a, it's, you have to get certified by the Army Corps Engineers.
And you have to get trained.
Yeah.
And you went to school.
In other words, there, there's a book, a big, a code book by the Army. That's all, a big, big book, you have to follow for doing it.
And if you sign off on something, you're, you're putting your reputation on the line.
Oh, yeah, oh, just like an engineer or anybody else, sure, oh, absolutely. Because what happens is Brian Orzell from the, from the federal government will come up and he will check it for you. And I've had him move a, a flag for me two feet, I had the flag on a branch, he came along and said, no. And had to change all the maps, all the maps for the subdivision. You gotta be right, they'll get you. You've got to be right, they'll get you.
Peter, I want to ask you a question about this. The property lines are shown as being some feet off of the edge of the road. Is that right?
Oh, yeah, sure, because most roads are fifty foot wide.
Oh, and then the, the easement to the road is the rest of it.
That's why when we're surveying or we're digging holes in people's lawn and they come running out and say, you're on my property. But no, we're on state property. The sidewalk is on the city. Anyway. Anybody else have any questions before you go on vacation?
Have some great dinners out on Thursday night.
All right, let's take a motion to adjourn.
Some moves.
All in favor?
Aye. Gray, I have a question for you.